Hi everyone. Welcome to the study on the Gospel of Luke. What would you think if I started this presentation off by saying, "Once upon a time, long, long ago," what would you think was going to happen? That's kind of the way the Gospel of Luke was written. Our Gospel that we're studying right now and that we're listening to every Sunday really comes from an oral tradition. So the people who were reading Luke were a people who had amazing memories. They would notice patterns and structures in the Gospel that would give them clues about the things that Luke is going to be talking about. In fact, Luke even begins his Gospel by saying, "I'm writing so that you may know the truth concerning the things that you have been instructed." Well, the first thing you want to know when a story begins like that is, "What things?" Taking a step back from this story, I want to share with you that Luke is written in a very positive way of seeing humanity as having been created good. Jesus comes, in the Gospel of Luke, to offer hope and restoration to people. And He does this in a number of ways. He wants to say that no one is excluded from the kingdom, not the poor, not the oppressed, not the injured, not women, not children, not sick people, not heretics, not Samaritans. Everyone is included, in a sense, at the banquet of the Lord. There's a book about eating through the Gospel of Luke. Jesus does a lot of His teaching in the Gospel of Luke through food. And Jesus is coming to say that the original purpose of humanity can be seen in the very first chapter of Genesis, where God over and over again says, "And this is good," including human beings. For many reasons, Jesus' people, and I really believe the people of our day, have gotten very far afield and very lost from understanding that God has really created us with a spark of Himself in us. In fact, you could say that because God has been made flesh, flesh has been made holy. We don't remember this so easily. And so the Gospel of Luke is calling us to remember that, as disciples of Jesus, we must know, first of all, that we were created good, whole, and with a purpose. Secondly, that there's a way that we stay on that path. And even in the first chapter, John describes himself as a voice crying in the desert, "Make straight the way of the Lord." Well, he wouldn't be saying, "Make straight the way," if there wasn't a way that people could find that way. So Luke is going to kind of tell us, what is that way and how do we find it? There are two really important pieces in the Gospel of Luke that come back to us over and over again. And they come back to us over and over again in stories, in healing stories, and in Jesus debates, and also, believe it or not, in nine poems that Luke includes, and some of it is from the Old Testament and some is poetry that he writes himself, that are all ways of saying, "Here's the way, this is how you find God." And there are two really important pieces. One is listening, listen to what God says to you. So over and over again, the theme of listening to God, hearing what God says, is really important. The second piece of Luke's Gospel is really focused on doing, what must I do? In fact, you hear that in the story from when we're learning about John in these early chapters. And the people respond to John, they've listened to what he says, and they respond to him by saying, "What must we do? What do we have to do to get ready for this prophet who is coming?" So listening and doing are very important. And Luke wants to say that the peace that we are looking for in our lives is only found when we find favor with God. And those who find favor with God are not the perfect people, the church people, the ones who are comfortable and respected in society. They're the people who do listen and then respond in obedience. That's what it means in the Gospel of Luke, to find favor with God. Now, He gives us clues, and He's actually a brilliant writer. You know, I think sometimes, I don't know about you, but I forget how smart the writers of the Gospels were. They're actually brilliant writers in their literary form, and I'll talk about what Luke does in a minute that we're going to be kind of looking at going forward in this study. But what are the clues that we're looking for here? There's, my favorite clue is where Luke pits a person of power against a person with no power, that they get compared and contrasted. The person with power loses, and the person with no power finds favor with God. So that's one clue that we're going to be looking for through the Gospel of Luke. Where do we see people who have power and authority and prestige and credibility in the society kind of flounder? And people who have no authority and no respect and no power in the culture are lifted up as examples of finding the way or the purpose towards God? A second clue will be the phrase, "Go and do likewise." Jesus says this a number of times in the Gospel of Luke. It indicates that this is a behavior that disciples of Jesus must always engage in if we are to find our way back to our true wholeness from the first chapter of Genesis, and our true goodness as we are created by God. A third clue would be verbal contests by power figures against Jesus. So Luke wants to really pit traditional thinking of his day, like the things that we would say, "Well, everybody knows that." There were certain sort of beliefs and practices in Jesus' day that everybody knew, and everybody believed, and everybody followed. So He will often contrast a person who represents traditional thinking with extremely non-traditional, non-culturally-accepted thinking that Jesus promotes and teaches. So that's another clue that we're watching for. And then the last clue is in the parables, and we'll be talking about these as we go through. The parables are very interesting stories because if you really know the culture in the background, you could say, "The people that Jesus is teaching these parables to, it would have turned their heads around." They would have been completely shocked, for example, to call a Samaritan good, like in the story of the Good Samaritan, would have been sort of like saying, "An honest politician." It just doesn't happen in this culture that a Samaritan would ever be seen as good. So those are kind of the structured, the pieces that are structured into Luke's stories and the way that he tells the story of Jesus, and reminds us that we are good, that we were created by God to be good, that we have a purpose, and that we must find a way to God. It's not a plan, it's not a plan, a religious plan, or religious ideas about how a person gets to God. We know that Jesus is always going up against the doctors of the law and the teachers of the law and kind of showing them up. A plan is a structure that you put together that has in mind the goal and has a set of steps by which you get to that goal. As opposed to, Luke calls it "the way." A way is a journey. If you're going on a vacation, you take a journey, you're on your way. And you're going to have experiences and meet people on that way that you're going to really be paying close attention to, that you're going to be listening to and responding to. So in the Gospel of Luke, we're called to the way, the way to Jesus, that is filled with basic principles about how we stay on that path and how we find favor with God. So let's look at this a bit from the perspective of Luke as a body of writing that comes out of oral tradition. One of the things that happens over and over again in the Gospel of Luke is there will be two stories that are told kind of almost side by side that will have virtually the same pattern. So let's look, for example, at comparing the interaction in this first chapter between Gabriel and Zechariah, who's John's father, and then the interaction between Gabriel and Mary. Now, let's look at these two people. The word of God comes to both of them in a completely shocking way, for different reasons, but you could kind of say that they're against all odds, God is going to do this in your life. Zechariah is respected, he's aged, he has a position, he's a priest. And he responds to this apparition of this angel, which is shocking to begin with, in a completely normal, ordinary, human way that you would kind of expect a normal person to be if they had an apparition of an angel coming to them and telling them something surprising. Mary, on the other hand, same angel, kind of the same story, comes to Mary and says, "Listen, this amazing thing is going to happen to you. It's shocking and it's surprising." She is a person of no power and no prestige. So you've got these two scenarios, these two people, who are in quite different situations in their life. And these contrasts are going to be echoed throughout Luke to illustrate the meaning of how one finds their way and how one doesn't. So let's look at Zechariah and Mary. First of all, Gabriel says to both of them, "Do not be afraid." So to Zechariah, he says, "For your prayer is answered." Zechariah is old, they've had no children, and Zechariah has been pleading heaven to give him a son. Mary, on the other hand, is young, a virgin, has no children. So Gabriel says to both of them, "Be not afraid." So he says to Mary, "Do not be afraid, Mary, for you have found favor with God." He says to Zechariah, "Do not be afraid, for your prayer is answered." Then, secondly, how will this happen? So to Zechariah, he says, "Your wife Elizabeth is going to bear a son." And to Mary, he says, "And now you will bear a son." And then the third piece of the story, what's the child's name going to be? So Gabriel tells Zechariah, "You'll name your son John." And then to Mary, his name will be called Jesus. And then there's some more to the message. "You will have joy and gladness, and many will rejoice at his birth. And he will be great in the sight of the Lord." That's what the angel Gabriel says to Zechariah. And when he says to Mary is, "He'll be great, and he'll be called the Son of the Most High." So you can see that Luke is telling the same story, but with two different people. Now, here's the question, why is it that Mary gets this great positive response, "Blessed are you among women, and blessed is the fruit of your womb." And Zechariah gets this response where Gabriel strikes him dumb, it hardly seems fair for this old guy to be punished because he's a bit confused about how this is all going to happen. Well, let's look at how these two people respond. So we have Zechariah, who says, "How is this going to happen to me? I am old, and my wife is old. How is this going to even happen?" In a sense, Zechariah says, "No way, there's no way that God could do this. Prove it to me, give me a sign." And it's kind of a comical way. Gabriel says, "Is it not enough that you've got an angel of God standing right in front of you telling you that this is going to happen? What is wrong with you?" And he says, "Because you have no faith, you won't be able to speak until you say the name of your son, John," which, of course, we know eventually he does. As opposed to Mary. Mary's response is, "Be it done unto me according to your word." She does have some questions about how it's going to happen, but it's not in the sense of, "There's no way this can happen, I need a sign." It's more that Mary has opened herself up to these amazing possibilities which make no common sense, but she does believe that the way to God, the path to God, is by listening to what God tells her and doing what she is being told. It's a totally different response and approach to faith, which is that Mary believes God. She believes the angel as her starting point. So when the angel comes to her and tells her the surprising news, she's able to say something like, "Wow, I have no idea how that could ever happen, but sure, why not? Be it done unto me according to your word." So this is a pattern that we're going to see throughout the whole of the Gospel of Luke. And He's going to be answering the question, "Who is favored by God and who is not? How do you tell those things? What's the way to being favored by God as Mary was? And what are the pitfalls? What are the things that will get us into trouble, such as Zechariah's kind of adherence to sort of common sense and looking at his own inability to do whatever this amazing thing is that God wants to do in his life? So Luke, throughout the Gospel, is going to be drawing us into a place where He wants us to give up our sort of common assumptions about how life is supposed to be, what God is actually capable of doing. He's asking us to give our doubts in the power of God and the love of God, give them up. Stop looking at our own selves and believe that we are good and that God is calling us to shocking, remarkable, and completely non-traditional ways of being disciples with Jesus. The second thing I want to share with you is, it's a bit of a, like a kind of a Bible nerd thing, but I think it's really amazing. And we're going to show you a picture of how this works on the screen here. Luke's story is, again, a journey into the kingdom of God, it's a way. And in order to do that, he uses a chiasmic structure, which means that he starts with a message at the beginning, and he also repeats that message at the end. So for example, in chapter nine, the story is focused on peace to this house. In chapter 18, he focuses on a story that says, "These things make for peace." Then, in chapter 10, "What must I do to inherit eternal life?" In chapter 18, as he closes in on the center, "What must I do to inherit eternal life?" So step by step, in a sense, Luke is closing in on us. He's giving us the path, He's giving us the principles of the path. So that by the time we get to the center of the Gospel, which is around chapter 13, what he wants to say is, "The kingdom of God is the way of peace that you've been learning about the way. Now enter it and be saved, enter it and be saved." So in a fairly brilliant way, he basically walks us into the center of the way to God and then says, "Here's the door, are you going to choose this or not?" Studying this scripture and then hearing it every Sunday, I think a really important couple of challenges that we have are the same challenges that Luke offers to his audience, which is, of course, us, that we really listen, we put away our prejudices and all of the things we think we know about our faith life, and be like Mary, completely open to kind of shocking possibilities, to things that are counterintuitive, to events that we could have never imagined would happen in our lives. And just know that, like Luke is walking us up to that door, so is God throughout our lives, walking us up to that door where He's going to say, "Walk through this, find peace, and be saved." Thank you so much for joining me in this reflection on the Gospel of Luke, and I really hope that you gain wisdom and strength through your study of this Gospel.
So tonight, I am going to do something a little different. I will not directly address each text we read for today. Rather, I will focus on a very important aspect of Luke, its Old Testament roots. I will specifically look at the Book of Isaiah to see how it helps shape the message of the Gospel of Luke. To begin, I will give a brief overview of Old Testament prophets in general. Then we will look at Isaiah itself. Lastly, we will turn to the Gospel of Luke, and we will look at some important themes in Luke which stem from Isaiah. We will finish up our discussion by looking at Luke's presentation of Jesus to see how it has been shaped both by Isaiah and one other prophetic tradition. So first, let's talk a little bit about prophetic literature. There are two different areas where we find prophetic literature in the Old Testament. One group of prophetic literature is referred to as the former prophets, which can be found in the books of Samuel and Kings. The prophets in these books left no writings of their own. Rather, here we have stories written about them and their works. Some of these former prophets are Samuel, Huldah, Elijah, Elisha, and Nathan. The other group of prophetic literature is referred to as the latter or written prophets. These prophets left their own writings, either by their own hands or the hands of their disciples. Some of these prophets are Jeremiah, Ezekiel, Hosea, and of course, Isaiah. So to kind of put ourselves in this context of the prophets, we'll talk about a couple of important places and times. I won't get too detailed because I know I get confused with dates and time, so I'm just going to try to keep it simple for everybody. During the time of the prophets, there were three main superpowers. One was Egypt, one was Assyria, which was north of Mesopotamia, and the third is Babylonia, which is in the south of Mesopotamia. Now Assyria and Babylonia were always fighting to have control over Mesopotamia. Egypt also tried to take over Mesopotamia several times as well, but never succeeded. And the ancient Israelites often found themselves caught in the middle of these battles, and not just because Israel was situated directly between them. Israel also had crops and goods that were desirable for a powerful nation to own, such as grapes and olives. So all three of these powerful kingdoms also wanted to control Israel. Because of this, Israel was frequently in a defensive position. And two of the most important places in ancient Israel were Samaria, which is the capital of the northern kingdom, and Jerusalem, which is the capital of the southern kingdom. There were two main crisis periods in ancient Israel's history where we see a lot of prophets. The first is the fall of Samaria, which happened in 722. The Assyrians took Samaria and completely devastated the north. Jerusalem became the capital and major city of Israel. Many people from the northern kingdom were deported to Persia, which was just past Mesopotamia. And some people also escaped to Judah, the southern kingdom. Then in 595, the Babylonians began making efforts and eventually succeeded in taking over Assyria. And in 587, we have the fall of Jerusalem. So Jerusalem, which the Israelites long believed to be indestructible, was destroyed by the Babylonians. The Jewish people were decimated and humiliated, and they were exiled to Babylon. Though there are many other battles, skirmishes, and national disputes in between these times, these two crisis moments shaped the identity and history of ancient Israel. So now we can move on to the prophets themselves. And we want to ask ourselves, "So what is a prophet and what did they do?" Within our modern understanding of prophecy, it is common to think about a prophet as someone who predicts the future. And of course, within Christian traditions, we tend to think of prophets as a group of people who predicted the coming of Christ and specific events in his life. But there is something very different going on with Old Testament prophets. These men and women did not foresee the future. Rather, Old Testament prophets were concerned about the here and the now, not the future. As biblical scholar Marvin Sweeney states, "Prophets are concerned primarily with events and circumstances of their own times and with influencing people within their own societies." A prophet, then, is someone with a project, to incite change, to call out injustices and abuses of power, or even to provide comfort to a suffering people. Each individual prophet was given his or her own task to complete and their own message to convey. Now, time will not allow us to represent each prophet's personal mission, but what we can do is look at them from a general perspective of pre-exilic and post-exilic prophets. So a pre-exilic prophet is a prophet who prophesied before the fall of Jerusalem and the Babylonian exile. These prophets consist of the former prophets, such as Elijah, and from the latter prophets, we have the eighth-century prophets, Hosea, Amos, and Micah. This group of eighth-century prophets also includes Isaiah of Jerusalem, which is also known as First Isaiah, and contains chapters 1 through 39 of the Book of Isaiah. Now, pre-exilic prophecy can really be understood as a prophecy of judgment. These prophets all understand themselves as being sent by God. They believe that Israel was being punished for not remaining faithful to God, and they demand that the people of Israel remain loyal by not worshiping other gods. It's also very important to note that proper worship of God also included the just treatments of one's neighbors. Due to infidelity, or the worship of other gods, and societal injustices, such as oppression to the poor or oppression of the poor, the pre-exilic prophets saw the relationship between Israel and God as deteriorating. It was their mission to spread this message and warn the people. Now, the post-exilic prophets were called to prophesy after Jerusalem fell to the Babylonians in 586. This time period consists of many prophets from what is known as the Book of the Twelve, such as Joel, Jonah, Obadiah, Zechariah, Haggai, and Malachi. Also working in this time period are Second and Third Isaiah and Jeremiah. Although most of his life happened prior to the exile, he was mostly active during the exile. And lastly, we also have Ezekiel. As we noted earlier, the pre-exilic prophetic message was mostly one of doom and judgment. Israel had not remained faithful to God, so they would be punished. Within the post-exilic prophets, there are still traces of this judgment, but there is a greater focus on restoration. The Book of Jeremiah is a great example of a prophet whose message contains both judgment and restoration. He calls for Israel to repent and to accept the attack of the Babylonians as punishment for their infidelity. And then in chapter 29, he urges the exiles to settle in Babylon and build new lives there. "For the Book of Jeremiah, in this act of continuing to live life, the Israelites will find hope and be restored." So this has been a very brief and general overview of the main messages of pre- and post-exilic prophets. But even so, we are able to see in what ways the prophets carried the message of God to the people. In the pre-exilic period, the prophets attempted to warn people against infidelity to God and to encourage them to change the way they related to each other and to God. The post-exilic prophets were in a different situation and thus had a very different message. While judgment is still a theme for these prophets, there is a greater shift towards hope and restoration for Israel. A common misunderstanding about prophets is that they were independent agents who operated outside of their societal institutions, that they were outcasts who lived on the fringes of society. Nothing can be further from the truth. In fact, prophets were integral to the institutions within Israel. This is especially true when it comes to the institution of the monarchy. We actually do not begin to see prophets in Israel's history until they start to have kings. And it was often a prophet who would anoint a king. They also often acted as advisors to kings with the ability to criticize and admonish, as we see with Nathan and David in chapter 12 of Samuel, of Second Samuel. There were also court prophets. These were professional prophets who functioned specifically as a part of the monarchical institution. The prophet is Huldah, who we meet in Second Kings, chapter 22, is an example of such a prophet, as well as the prophets Nathan and Gad. We should also make note that one did not have to be a court prophet to interact with the royal court. Jeremiah was not a court prophet, but we see in chapter 38, he is summoned by kings at Akhaya and asked for counsel. Kings also sought out advice of prophets regarding disputes and war tactics, which we see happen with Deborah and Barak in the Book of Judges, actually, and King Ahab and Machaiah in First Kings 22. And that's kind of a funny story, if you ever get a chance to go back and read First Kings, chapter 22. That's a really great story of a king and a prophet interacting. So I highly suggest you look that one up. So while there is this strong connection between prophets and kings, this relationship did not keep prophets from speaking to a wider audience. For example, in the eighth century, we see prophets turn their attention to the ruling classes within society, such as judges, priests, and the wealthy classes. The prophet Amos, for example, focuses sharply in on these ruling classes when he speaks of them sleeping on beds of ivory in chapter six. So we can see, then, how prophets were focused on the problems of their time. The duty of a prophet was to foretell, to speak to the issues of his or her time, not to foretell the future. They were an integral part of Israel's societal structure and often functioned as Israel's conscience. After the fall of Jerusalem in 587, the kingship is never reestablished, and at this time, prophecy becomes unimportant. So we will now turn our attention to the Book of Isaiah. The Book of Isaiah is interesting because it is actually a collection of writings regarding three different prophets, or possibly even their disciples, from three different times. These three collections are broken down into First Isaiah, which is chapters 1 through 39, Second Isaiah, chapters 40 through 55, and Third Isaiah, chapters 36 through 66. So we will begin by looking at First Isaiah. And First Isaiah is also commonly known as Isaiah of Jerusalem, and this collection of writing comes from around the time of year 700. And First Isaiah is one of our pre-exilic prophets. And his texts date to the time just before and after the fall of the northern kingdom in 722. Samaria at this time was taken by the Assyrians, who completely destroyed the northern kingdom. And this section of Isaiah is really just pure indictment. Isaiah prophesies that God is going to use Assyria as a means of discipline. He does not encourage his people to defend themselves from the Assyrians. Rather, he urges them to maintain a pacifistic stance. Israel is going to suffer for their lack of holiness, justice, and morality. There is a very strong negative anthropology in this section of Isaiah. And this is a very important term you'll hear me use. I use negative anthropology and positive anthropology. So what we're talking about, when we talk about anthropology, it's a view of humanity. Anthropology comes from the Greek word anthropos, which means human. So when something has a negative anthropology, that means it has a negative perspective on humanity. So in the Bible, something that has a negative view of humanity is going to focus a lot on sin, it's going to focus a lot on punishment, and seeing people as responsible for their own bad things that happen to them, like illnesses and the destruction of an entire culture due to another group of people coming in and taking over. So just kind of keep your ear out because I'm going to be switching back and forth between those two terms, negative and positive anthropology. So now we will move on to Second Isaiah. And Second Isaiah is one of our post-exilic prophets. He worked during the time of the exile after Jerusalem fell to the Babylonians. We see there is a definite shift in perspective from what we see in First Isaiah. A hero has now come into play for the Israelites, the king of Persia, Cyrus. In 539, Cyrus conquered Babylon, and Cyrus was known as the very merciful tyrant. So his policies towards his subjects were generally tolerant, and within a year, he had authorized that the Jewish exiles could return back to Israel. So here we see a shift from that negative perspective of First Isaiah toward a more positive perspective. Second Isaiah does not understand the Babylonian captivity as punishment for sins. Rather, their suffering had a positive purpose. They were bearing the sins of other nations so that they could serve as a light to them. And since we're here talking about Second Isaiah, I guess we should address the servant songs and the suffering servant. So it is in Second Isaiah where we find these four servant songs. These poems, especially Isaiah 53, have traditionally been understood as a prophecy of the passion of Jesus. There is still some dispute as to who this servant was understood to be to the sixth-century Jews. Some have tried to identify him with Moses, some with Zerubbabel, who was a governor at the time. Some also identify him with the prophet Jeremiah, and even Second Isaiah himself. Most scholars, however, do not believe the suffering servant is meant to be a specific historical person. Rather, it is an idealized presentation of the faithful Jews in exile. The way the early church used these passages to help them understand Christ tells us a lot more about their faith than it does about Isaiah's actual message. And it's important to keep that in mind when we're looking at these texts. Now, Third Isaiah is another one of our post-exilic prophets, and it is closely related to Second Isaiah. These texts come from a much later time, the time after the exiles returned from Babylon and had to face the reality of the situation back at home. This section of Isaiah represents the struggle between the returning exiles and the natives, or those who had not been exiled. Both of these groups are Jewish, but the returnees were very exclusive groups. So we have artisans, soldiers, people who were educated and could read and write. And these returnees were much more focused on exclusivity. The natives were a much more inclusive group. They were less concerned with following the letter of the law and more focused on popular religiosity and a devotional life. So there was a deep division within this community. Yet out of these circumstances emerges a powerful vision of a new heaven and earth, a theme that is picked up later in the Book of Revelation. In this section, as well as much of Second Isaiah, we see an emphasis on oracles of salvation. Restoration is a very important theme here, as it is for all the prophets, and really, the whole Bible. Restoration is something that happens at the personal and societal levels. It is not something that happens in some unknown distant time. It is salvation and healing at all levels, personal, spiritual, and societal. Restoration is something that links us back to creation. Now, whenever we think of creation, we want to go back to Genesis 1 in our minds, when God made the earth, the sky, sea, animals, and humans. Then God looked upon this creation and proclaimed it to be Tove, which is the Hebrew word for good. This word, Tove, is used seven times in the first creation account. But after God makes human, God looks over all of creation and proclaims it to be Tove Meod, exceedingly good. Creation is good. Humanity is very good. It went off track, but it can get back to what it was. It can be restored. In the final chapters of Isaiah, chapters 34 through 36 especially, we see a lot of something scholars call Zion theology. There are many different aspects to this theology, but what is important for us to remember is that it is rooted in the perspectives of Genesis 1 and the Book of Leviticus. It is a hopeful and optimistic vision of the world and humanity. This perspective looks upon all of God's creation and proclaims it to be very good, just as God does in Genesis 1. All right, so we're studying the Gospel of Luke, so why is Isaiah so important for us? The Book of Isaiah holds a very special place within our Christian tradition, and there are several different reasons why. One, of course, is the messianic oracles, which are references to an anointed one. Now, we have to be careful about these oracles because they are not references to Christ, but of a person from their particular context. So we want to be careful. We've talked about this before, but we want to be very careful that we don't read Christ into the Old Testament. Another reason this is important, Isaiah, is the suffering servant. As we mentioned, these are four oracles about a suffering servant. And these oracles become very important to the early church because they use them to help themselves understand what happened to Christ. A third reason Isaiah is so important is because it has such a strong vision of hope. It is often referred to as the fifth gospel. Isaiah has a very strong peace orientation to it, and it offers a vision of the world as it should be. And finally, and most importantly for our purposes, Jesus quotes from Third Isaiah, specifically chapter 61, to begin his ministry in the Gospel of Luke.